This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council meeting for August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Pledge allegiance will be led by Mrs. Amos.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos.
Present.
Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Milliken.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Time in is seven thirty-five. We have no minutes to approve this evening, no communications or petitions, and we'll just jump right into public comments. Public comments are limited to five minutes per individual. If you wish to address council, please approach the podium. Print your name and address and begin speaking by stating your name. Your time will not begin until you begin speaking. When you have one minute remaining, you'll be gently interrupted to signal that your time is about to expire. After five minutes, you will be notified that your time has expired and the podium should be vacated to allow for the next person to speak. Let it be noted that this is not a time for council to answer specific questions. If you do have a question, you may ask it during your time, and we will attempt to have your question addressed throughout the remainder of this meeting. If you do not feel your question has been addressed, please reach out to a member of council or appropriate city director after the meeting. At this time, I'll open up the podium.
My name is Anne Bennett, and I'm a resident of Canal Winchester since about nineteen ninety. I'm here this evening to object to proposed ordinance twenty-two oh twenty-nine, which seeks to change the rules of council meetings in several ways that include slashing the amount of time officially available per person for public comments by forty percent from five minutes to three minutes. If council was trying to make itself more insulated from and less transparent to its voters, this ordinance fits the bill. What in the world are you thinking? If meetings are running too long to justify the amount of money council members are paid, increase their pay. The city can save money by not buying sledding hills in flood zones that no one else wants and by turning off all the lights at Miguel Park, which is closed after dark. If council members feel encumbered by one or two late nights per month, they may want to revisit their role in the city government. From a voter's perspective, this ordinance suggests council deems public input to be tiresome or inconvenient, and that is wrong. Please, when this comes to a vote, I urge you to vote no on it, or better yet, to withdraw from consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address council this evening? Okay. Onto reports of city officials and staff. First item is mayor's report. Mayor Eber.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Just real quickly, there's going to be a nine eleven ceremony on Sunday, September eleventh, at one p.m., and it's the annual remembrance ceremony. It'll be held at Monts-Montreux Museum, fifty-seventy-five Hamilton Road, Groveport. More information should be coming our way, and when I get it, I'll be sure to get it on to you. And just to add to that, in the next few weeks, you'll be seeing on the electronic board out there on Waterloo Street is Pumpkins Helping People, and that's three siblings who started a company, started a five oh one C three on their own back in two thousand seventeen, and they started growing their own pumpkins to sell with the proceeds going to the food bank, food pantry, where they found out the first year that they didn't have a whole lot of knowledge in growing pumpkins, so they hired, actually started buying their pumpkins locally, and they're still doing the same thing. They're buying them, they bring them in, they clean them up, and then they're doing online purchases. To date, since they've been doing this in two thousand seventeen, they've raised twelve thousand eight hundred dollars for the Canal Winchester Food Pantry. And that's, they started this company, it was two sisters and a brother, ages fifteen, thirteen, and eleven years old, and they still are doing this, and they're not taking any pay for it at all. It's all volunteer for them. So, three years ago, we started putting their advertisement and their how the people can order on our electronic billboard, and it grew, the numbers of sales grew greatly every year since, and so we're going to do it again this year. They are very appreciative, and I just want to let you all know. I've ordered pumpkins home before, and I tell you, they're the best looking pumpkin you'll ever see. They really are. I mean, before they give them to you, before they drop them off at your door, you pick them up or however you arrange to do that, they clean them, they wash them, and they look like, they really look real. It really does, but they do a great job, so if you can support them, you're supporting the food pantry as well. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Mayor Eber, do you feel, so first of all, I cannot believe that we're halfway through August, and the next three months, four months are going to blow by. Do you feel that you have everything that you need and all the questions answered for Dora to be able to make that application, or do you still have some outstanding questions?
For the what?
For Dora.
Oh, no. Luke and I have been working on that, and we should be able to present something maybe next month.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
We had to change a lot of it. It was, and so we're taking a different approach to it, but we'll have, should have it next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Eber. Fairfield County Sheriff, Sergeant Walker.
Hello, thank you. I have nothing to add to my written report. We are going to be getting ready to move into our new substation, hopefully within the next few weeks, so we're pretty excited about that, but I will take any questions if you have any.
Are there any big plans with your new space that will enhance your capabilities as law enforcement professionals in our community?
Well, currently, we have the substation, and then we park our cruisers elsewhere because there is no parking at our current substation, so we will park at our new substation, which will be awesome. They'll get to respond from the substation, get all their stuff from there, so be able to give you a quicker response time, hopefully, from there.
And you're not in the basement anymore?
That's a plus.
Would you need to motion the mayor's court?
I can see that in there.
Motion will approve mayor's court records.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Shea and second by Mrs. Amos. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Amos. Real quick, Sergeant Walker, thanks again for the increased presence over by the pool. I saw him again today on the way home, so it's just nice to see somebody there kind of keeping an eye on things.
Sure, not a problem. They're floating between the pool and then Deets and Connor Drive, so.
Okay, great. Law Director.
Hi, my name is Phil Hartman. I'm here on behalf of Thad Boggs tonight. No report this evening, but I know we'll be going into executive session, so that'll be available by phone as well for that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Finance Director, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I did not have a written report this meeting. I was on vacation last week, but I did want to just briefly mention work is continuing on the two thousand twenty-three budget, and this is the last full week of pool operations. As the kids get ready to go back to school, we will be closed Monday through Friday starting next Monday, the twenty-second, and we will only be open on Saturdays and Sundays, and the last official pool day will be Sunday, September fourth. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Public Service Record, Mr. Peoples is not with us, it seems, so we'll go on to Development Director, Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I would ask that ordinance twenty-two oh two-six and twenty-two oh two-seven remain tabled. We are still working with Groveport Madison Schools and have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow to further discuss that, so would ask that that remain tabled until the next meeting. I know many of you attended a meeting with Representative Carey last week, so that was good to get in front of him in regards to U.S. thirty-three. It's my understanding he supported earmark that it's making its way through Congress currently for three million dollars for the widening of U.S. thirty-three, and so hopefully that'll come to fruition and that can help accelerate that project. That widening includes the addition of another lane that is from Diley Road to I-270 along thirty-three, so it'll be an additional lane in each direction there, which is included in the track process. The track process is still moving forward. They're intending to have scoring, preliminary scoring, at the end of this month, and so be happy to share those once we get that information. And then thank you for any of you that submitted public comments to MORPSY. MORPSY, the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, ranks those projects and gives a recommendation to the track committee on those. There are six projects submitted in the region. Two of those are U.S. thirty-three, so it's the projects associated with the Bixby Road Interchange, the widening, and the I-270 interchange with thirty-three, and then there's another separate project that's the Pickerington Road Interchange, so we'll keep you updated on those. And then lastly, in regards to that Bixby Road area, we did receive some notification from the city of Columbus that they've received an application for rezoning for the remainder of the Levin property, so that's the north side of Winchester Pike on the west side of Bryce Road, and the proposal was for five hundred and thirty-eight multifamily units, ten thousand square feet of commercial place, space, and a five thousand square foot convenience store and gas station with twelve pumps. And so we'll be working with them in evaluating that traffic study for that rezoning request that's come before the city of Columbus. There's an additional rezoning request for the Lamb property that's north along Bryce Road, just south of World Harvest, and that's for an additional nine hundred units. And so we'll be working to make sure that they're including all those proposals in any traffic studies that are being done there.
Is it too late to try and annex the other side of the Levin property?
I believe there's a contract, developers under contract, to purchase that property, and that's moving forward, the request in the city of Columbus.
So that would be four gas stations within a half mile of each other.
You're going to need them with that many apartments.
So, what do we need to do to get them to pay into the Bixby Road Interchange? Who do we need to talk to? Because all of these developers that are coming in should be paying into that fee.
Yeah, we're going to coordinate with them on the traffic study side of things to make sure that the impacts of the traffic are considered for Bixby Road.
But I mean, how do we get the developers of those projects to pay in? That's what I want. I want all of the nine hundred unit apartments to, for that developer to pay, so when you say you're incorporating them in the traffic study, will the city of Columbus then impose a portion of this development cost for them?
It's unlikely, because that's not a city of Columbus intersection. The Bixby Road Interchange would be an ODOT project, so it's unlikely that they would require any type of contribution.
Are they all tax abated?
It is within the area. I don't know if there's a specific application associated with that, but it is within the area that permits a fifteen-year, hundred percent exemption if they provide a certain percentage of affordable units.
Lucas, do you know how many letter, or how many correspondence MORPSY got for the thirty-three project?
I don't. Their deadline was, it was Friday. I can follow up and request any correspondence submitted.
Yeah, just to get an idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hare. Onto resolutions. First resolution is twenty-two dash zero three one. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to accept a deed of easement for Sanitary Stewart from MRG Ohio Propco LLC.
And the sponsor is Mr. Busker.
I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution twenty-two zero three one. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Busker and second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Next, resolution twenty-two dash zero three two. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to accept a deed of easement for Waterline from MRG Ohio Propco LLC.
Sponsor again, Mr. Busker.
And I would move to accept resolution twenty-two zero three two.
The chair will second. Motion was made by Mr. Busker, second by the chair. Roll call.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
And on to ordinances. Ordinance twenty-two dash zero two three, I believe we're going to keep that tabled.
We would like to move that forward this evening or have discussion on it.
Okay, so sponsor of this is the chair, so make a motion to untable ordinance twenty-two dash zero two three.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Hare, you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, so at a previous meeting, I shared that we did receive the Phase Two environmental for this property. Did come back that there is some contamination in the soil on the site from that, from a former fuel leak, so, you know, we have worked with the property owner there to reduce the purchase price, so what was proposed to be a purchase price of two hundred and eighty thousand, we're proposing that we amend that to a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar purchase price for that site and that we would move forward with the purchase. Because the tanks on the site were removed prior to Buster being in existence, which is the Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks, they're not considered fuel tanks under Ohio's laws, and so there's not necessarily a requirement that we would have to remediate the site. It could remain as is, as long as we didn't alter the area where the fuel tanks are. We are still seeking a proposal for a further investigation on what extents of pollution are there. It's likely that there may be some additional pollution that has spread to the southeast, but it's unlikely it's spread in any other direction, which would basically take it towards Stradley or towards the public right of way. And so the Spence Environmental, who's our contractor that is the Phase Two, that's what their proposal would be, to do a couple more test borings on the site to the south and the east to understand if there's been additional spread in that direction. We don't have that done yet. We've also communicated with a contractor out of the Dayton area that specializes in vapor mitigation to look at the system, installing the system in the basement there that would prevent any vapors from coming into the site if we were to leave the soils the way they are.
So I did some homework and asked around, and there was a Phase One done on the old South Central building, and it came back completely clean, so we don't have to be as concerned about it going that way.
So the reduction was fifty thousand, if I'm doing my math correctly, after a long day. So after we do the remediation, after we do the second step of remediation, if we determine there is any additional, do we feel like what we've changed in pricing is going to be enough to cover any additional remediation we may have to do?
It's unknown the extent of, you know, what remediation would need to be done, but that would be a choice we would have to make, whether we want to actually do remediation or whether we would just leave the site as is, depending on the scale and the scope of the contamination there.
So if we look at the Old Town Plan, part of the plan was to add a patio, a restaurant with a patio on the side of this, so is that, half the building would go away for the patio area, or is that?
Yeah, the Old Town Plan contemplated that a new building would be constructed there, and that, you know, if we, if we decided not to clean up the contamination on the site, that wouldn't be possible, because once you get into amending the soils and doing building foundations and things like that, we'd be required to clean up. You know, so what we could do is, you know, do a patio in the front of the building adjacent to Stradley Place, then that wouldn't necessarily require us to do any remediation.
And then if we do, so we're still going to pursue the additional information as to whether it's contaminated further, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and from there, we can decide if we want to remediate and if we do apply for the grants that are, the cities are available.
Yes, there are brownfield grants that are available. There is a significant amount of money that's available currently. The application deadline is in September. We won't have the testing done at that point in time to apply for this round, but it's likely there'll still be funds available in the future so that in a future round, we would be able to apply once we know the extent of the contamination there.
Yeah, I still, cleaning up a site to leave it for our future, it's kind of important because we just don't know somewhere down the line that somebody won't try to dig it up and cause a bigger issue.
All right, so it's more in line with what the appraised value would have been, so based on discussions with the appraiser, the property originally praised at two hundred and sixty-five thousand, because contamination is known now, they said there could be up to a twenty percent reduction in the values, so two hundred and twelve thousand, so Mr. Moody was unwilling to accept anything less than two hundred and thirty and fifty thousand dollar reduction, and he would like to move forward with our original closing date, which would be by the end of this month.
Are you currently pursuing, I mean, obviously, we have some, some things to work out as to whether we need to clean it up. Are you currently pursuing additional restaurants that, or additional business opportunities that could go there?
I have actively been working on that because there's an existing tenant in the space who would like to remain there until they find a new location. So we would likely do a short-term lease with them to allow them to remain in this space while they, they build out new office space in the city.
But we can still continue remediation while they're there or looking into it?
Correct.
Okay.
So it'll give us essentially more time with income coming in on the property.
Okay.
So are you looking for a motion to approve the, to buy the property tonight?
Yes.
Yeah. If there's no other questions, I'll move, I'll move to pass ordinance twenty-two dash zero two three.
Chair will second. Motion was made by Mr. Clark, second by the chair. Roll call.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Third readings, ordinance twenty-two dash zero two six. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Canal Winchester to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with North Point Development LLC pursuant to section three seven three five point six seven one of the Ohio revise code authorizing the city of Canal Winchester to enter a related school compensation agreement with the Canal Winchester Local School District and North Point Development LLC and declaring emergency.
Sponsor is Mrs. Amos.
I believe Mr. Hare said we're going to put these on table then?
That would be my request, to leave them tabled, correct?
Okay, real quick before we table them, I did want to bring something up with council. So in there, we talked about the community benefit agreement, and the way the wording is currently listed, this is something that we haven't listed as the city would control how that money's used. I know I've talked with a couple of you. This goes back to a conversation when we were all doing some of the negotiations. Lori and I had a conversation before any of the other members, before any of the groups came together. It was actually on a night when a meeting was canceled. She and I still met with the developer, and this is something that came out of it. And then continued conversations during negotiations brought to light more, so I really feel like because council represents the people, this should be something that council has a little more control over, and potentially, we talked about maybe doing a committee with some residents and council and a city person to co-op with the ideas for this, so just toss that around before we approve it, that I would like it at least changed to council, and then we can go from there. But we represent the community, and this is a community benefit agreement. So on that, I'll motion to table ordinance twenty-two dash zero two six, unless somebody wants further conversation.
That change has been requested by me from Mr. Boggs, and he said, when I asked him, that it wouldn't be needed because it was going to be tabled tonight, but that request has been made to Mr. Boggs.
Yeah, just want to make sure we have it out there.
All right, the motion on the table to table.
Second.
By Mrs. Amos and second by Mr. Shea. Roll call.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Next, resolution twenty-two dash zero three two. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to accept a deed of easement for Waterline from MRG Ohio Propco LLC.
Sponsor again, Mr. Busker.
And I would move to accept resolution twenty-two zero three two.
The chair will second. Motion was made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Walker. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Second readings, ordinance twenty-two dash zero two eight. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance to require notification of location in the historic district and preservation district.
Sponsor is Mr. Shea.
Second reading only.
First readings, we have ordinance twenty-two dash zero two nine. Clerk, if you'd read that.
An ordinance to amend the rules of the Canal Winchester City Council.
Sponsor is Mrs. Amos.
First reading only, please.
Ordinance twenty-two dash zero three zero. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance amending the final development plan for the Green Gate Residential Development.
Sponsor is Mr. Shea.
First reading only.
I would note that the developer's here, if you would like to ask some of the questions directly that you might ask in the committee or the whole, that may be questions.
We absolutely would. Come on up to the podium.
John Bills here on behalf of the developer and the Green Gate Project One LLC, the developer for the Green Gate project. for the Green Gate project.
Say your last name again for me?
Bills, B-I-L-L-S.
Mr. Bills, so I have quite a few concerns on this. I'm going to be honest with you. The proposal lists a couple of different styles of fence. We shared earlier during our work session that, me personally, I think four foot's a little high in a condominium unit. I, I'm one of seven, so I'll just say that part is mine. But having a multitude of different styles of fence, even though they're all aluminum and they're all black, but having a multitude of different potential styles, I've seen condominium units where people are allowed to put up fences and then they become degraded and they become, there's so many different styles and it's such a tight little community. I'm concerned about the appearance, not necessarily now, but in five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, when you have a multitude of different fence styles and sizes. The way our current ordinance is, it says up to four feet. So first of all, one, somebody suggested we would have to make a set height if we considered this and then potentially a set style, not necessarily a manufacturer, but a set style that would be community-driven. Is that something you would consider?
Yeah, it was actually something that we did talk about with commission. We, like you, I believe for probably the reasons you just stated, we don't really want to go to a specific manufacturer or anything because if they go out of business, things change, they change a line. But we are open to trying to set a more specific, you know, we had four examples and then it wasn't intended to be any one. We, we would be open to trying to narrow it down, picking a style, whether that be, you know, there's like common features. I'm not a fence expert, but there are some common features like the number of crossbars, whether it's got one crossbar at the top and, you know, one or two, or one at the bottom or one or two at the top. We could set a little bit more specific parameters around, you know, the spacing, the types of bars, whether it has the pickets on the top or not, so that they become more uniform. And then we're okay with specifying a specific four foot. I think that's a pretty standard. We, you know, I'd have a little bit of hesitation with going lower, just for some of the reasons of what they want to get them. The only other alternate or that we would want to allow for, and part of it's just around the different types of dogs people have and what they'd like to have, some people have bigger dogs, where I've had a dog that would jump over a three-foot fence. We've also had some people that have small dogs, so they want to be able to add, one of the pictures we showed in here, they, one of the commission members called it puppy pickets, I think it's called, but it's, they can put a little bit tighter band for the first foot or two foot on the bottom, it's to keep the small dogs in. So other than like those variations, we'd be comfortable saying, you know, all four feet so that they could stay uniform and we're open to trying to narrow the band of what the types are as long as we stay away from a manufacturer to lock one person in. We'd be open to that.
And I'm assuming this will be a request for the entire community, even including the ones that are still under development?
Under development. It would be for, it's split into seven phases, although we're building them two phases at a time right now, but yes, it would be for the entire subdivision, that seven phases that we have.
So one of the things Mr. Shea and I have asked for is just to see the current plot, how it all lays out and what it's going to look like with, let's just say, every single person takes it, how many fences, what's this going to do to the common area? I think he and I both want to see what's the overall footprint that this is going to cause.
And we can, we can probably put some type of exhibit together that kind of shows what that would look like. We did take a quick look at it and I don't have the specific measurements because it came up at commission as well, how much space would there be? It's a little misleading and I don't, the report for tonight's meeting, commission I think had one in it, it's a little bit slightly different. It showed the overall plat with like the, the maximum condo box areas or whatever, which are actually drawn deeper than what the houses were. So there, you know, from back of house to back of house was over 90 feet or whatever. So, and that's like in the narrow spots on it, some of them were much more than that in the larger sections. So even if they put 30 foot on it, you still had a decent green space, like 60-plus feet. But we can get a little bit more specific with measurements and share that with staff in order to get it to council as well, just to give you an idea to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Bills.
And am I allowed to make any? The main reason we did bring this forward, you know, when we presented, when we first came to council and we put the development text together, we were a little bit unclear at that time how the condo documents would be written and we had worked with staff and ultimately, you know, and we then brought a builder in afterwards as well. And we did put in like this limited area. So there's already like a limited use area that it's only for each condo unit. We allowed it initially for underground fence, but we didn't know how the maintenance would work yet and how it was all going to work. It is now written that that area that is behind, that, that is limited for each condo user, that they already have to maintain it. It is for their private usage. At that point, it's what kind of opened us up to, okay, we like the idea of allowing fences because the market has also told us, the buyers, they want to be able to put it in. But we did want to limit it to one style and do it because we want to keep the appeal. We want it to look good, we want it to be something we can be proud of, the residents can be proud of. So that's why we put it together the way we did, trying to narrow it and we're willing to narrow it a little bit more to keep it even more consistent. But that was the thought behind it. We think it can still look great. It gives the residents what they want, what the buyers are saying they want because they want to be able to have a dog and let it out and do that. So we're hoping this is a compromise. We think it'll, it'll keep the aesthetics and we just didn't quite have the vision down when we originally wrote the development text with staff and with the original commission and council. So we got a clearer picture of what we, we think people want and what could look good in there as well. So appreciate your consideration of it and we're definitely open, Ms. Amos, to your comments.
Now that you've brought that up, let's ask another question. So your common areas are, I'm assuming, controlled by the condo association as in most of them that maintain the grounds, so they mow the grass?
Yep. All of the, the common area is maintained by it, but there is, I think it's called limited use common area and it's in the development text and it's in there, where from like behind the house, like to halfway between their neighbor's house and then 30 feet off the, the rear of the home, it's for their limited use. So it is only for that resident, it's so they can have a patio, they could have things like that that they can use that a neighbor can't say, I have the right to come on, you know, into that area and use it. So it's in the development text that there's this limited use. The fence has to stay within that, the way we've written it, it would be within there. And the resident does take care of that space themselves.
So do they maintain, does the resident maintain it if there's no fence or is that covered?
Correct. That is right. It's written that they, within the condo docs, it is written that they take care of that space.
So you mow a strip down the middle and they're responsible for the remainder?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That, the fence maintenance, as far as 10 years, 15 years down the road, they, they tend to, whether they're powder coated or not, tend to discolor. Is the owner of that condo responsible for keeping that?
They will be. It will be the owner's responsibility because they're putting it within their limited area, but it will be at the discretion of the condo board to keep appearances up and to be able to issue, similar to other things, if they don't take care of on the exterior, they could issue notices and ultimately have the right to fix it at their cost and assess to them, like other condo issues.
I think that was Ms. Amy. You asked earlier if it could be in the condo associations.
The homeowner's agreement, yeah.
The rules, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for making the trip up.
Ordinance 22-031. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and clerk to accept and exclude the plot of Green Gate subdivision, Phase Three and Five.
And this is first reading only as well. Onto council reports. We have a committee of the whole meeting Monday, August 29th at 6:00 PM and as we've kind of directed tonight, I guess we'll discuss bed tax and the chambers proposal. Is there anything else anybody would like to add to that agenda?
I will be out of town.
You'll be out of town? All right. Next work session at council is Tuesday, September 6th at 6:00 PM and then work session council Monday, September 19th at 6:00 PM. CW Human Services, Mr. Walker.
I have nothing to report at this time, but I will defer to Ms. Amy if she doesn't, if you have anything, I think I.
Nothing new. Mayor Ebert, we appreciate the fact that you would put on the city's marquee about the pumpkins helping people because we truly benefit from that, our food pantry benefits, which ultimately means our clients benefit, so thank you for that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Amy.
Thank you, guys. CW ICC, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, our next meeting is August 31st, 11:30 at, are we still at the inner urban building or are we in the, huh? We're here at the city, city conference room.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. CW JRD, Ms. Amos and Mr. Shea.
Our next meeting is this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
Thank you. Destination Town Winchester is the chair. Farmers Market's continuing through the end of September. There is a market that's going to be held the Saturday of Labor Day weekend from 9:00 to noon in the usual location. Destination is working with the Historical Society, planning the October 15th Founder's Day event and also planning for the December events such as reindeer games and Christmas in the village. That's all I have for Destination. Onto old and new business, I have one quick item. We were talking about beautification, remind me, Ms. Amos, I think it was last year you brought up the issue about the, in front of Meyer, where the, welcome to Canal Winchester, it's starting to look pretty rough again.
Actually, just had a conversation, Andrew and Lucas, they're already on it.
Excellent.
Just talked to them today, so they are.
We did notify Meyer probably two and a half, three weeks ago about the maintenance of not only that sign area, but just the overall landscape maintenance. You know, they invested over $80,000 in that last year and then they promptly ignored the site again.
Yeah.
And so hopefully we can get them back to where they're putting some efforts into that maintenance.
Good, thank you. Older new business, anyone?
Two things. One, I, when we talk about the downtown property, I just want to make sure that the residents understand, part of the reason we are seeking to buy this property is with the remediation, the city can qualify for grants to clean it up, that businesses or potential developers cannot. So it makes it an unusable site for quite a few people and I think it's imperative and a lot of us agree, that if we're going to protect our downtown area, we need to clean up some of the things that have happened in the past, including old gas stations or things that have happened. And we need to know that we've done it right as far as cleanup. And so since we can qualify for funds, we just want to make sure that our residents understand it's part of the reason, at least for me, that it's imperative that we take control and get that cleaned up for our future. And then second thing, and Matt left, or Matt's not here, so I was going to address this with him. The park lights for McGill Park are on all night. Talked to a couple of residents this weekend, so there's, there's at least one resident who says it goes through their bedroom window all night long and it's just kind of an obnoxious light and they're trying to block it out the best they can. But I know that at one point in time, we had talked about those would go off at a certain point in time at night or where they would reduce and filter down, but that hasn't happened. It was quite a few meetings ago we discussed it, so, anybody address that?
I'll have to check with Bill or Matt, see if they do go off. I know they were going off.
Yeah. According to two residents.
They're not all on. There's only a handful of them on.
Yeah, it's, and it's mainly, I know it's partly the ones, but I, originally when we discussed this, we had talked about the fact that at night they would, they would dim down a little bit, they wouldn't be as bright, but apparently they've not gone down at all. The families around there are very concerned because the bat population for mosquitoes is not coming around because the lights are on all the time. So they're not seeing the bats that they need to see for normal production and normal mosquito removal. And then also just because the residents are seeing it, they, they're putting up as many blinds as they can to block it out, but the one residence that I can see through my neighbor's house at 2:00 AM.
I have intentionally driven out there at night when it's pitch black almost and I have not witnessed that. Matter of fact, there's not even light spilling over onto the roadway.
And, and I don't know if it's the way it's projected, I mean, if you, maybe if you're standing at those houses, and I can always get you the addresses of the people that called and that I met with at Farmers Market, but I think it's, you know, maybe we need to go out to their houses or maybe, like I said, if we can at least start with revisiting, are the lights going down in the, you know, what's the word I'm looking for?
Dusk.
The brightness. It's supposed to be dim and dusk.
Dim and dusk.
Can we check to see if we're able to do that?
I know Mr. Sims has had conversations with at least two residents out there.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we're addressing it because we did have this conversation a while back and said that this was what was going to happen, but they said it's not. So I just want to follow up.
Ten times.
And that's all I have for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just to carry over, just that Mayor Ebert agreed to have the staff research the digital transcription technology, just so that it's captured for the council minutes.
All right, with that being said, the chair would like to make a motion to enter into executive session to confer with an attorney for the city concerning pending litigation.
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Timeout, 8:18. Do we want to go to the conference room? Somebody make that suggestion last time?
Yes.
Yeah.
I want to come too.